Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, council. I'd like to call or order this city council meeting on February the 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. There is a quorum present. If you would bow your heads with me, I'll offer an invocation and then stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Father in heaven, for your many blessings. We appreciate all that you do and rely on your guidance. In Jesus's name, amen.
(affirmative) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's with great pleasure Chief Mays and Division Chief Thetford will be introducing our volunteer firefighters. There were 57 that applied test. Other 57, through testing and interviews, volunteer firefighters, now that's, those are volunteers who are 18 and older. A junior firefighter is 16 and 17-year-olds and in high school. But of that group, there were eight volunteers that made that for the volunteer firefighter program and six for the junior firefighters. They have a rigorous program. That's why I've not gone to volunteer to be a firefighter. Nonetheless, Chief, please.
Well, good evening, Mayor Council. First and foremost, be safe going home. But it's an exciting time of year for us to take on these new recruits and get to know the different people in our communities. And not for sure what all they're going to tell you tonight, but one of them's a paid fireman somewhere else, so he's bringing some experience to us. We have one that lives in the city. We have, the juniors have to live within eight miles and several of them go to Eaton High School. Eaton offers the EMT program for your medical certification. And I just think it's a great partnership, what they can come through in our program and get some fire training to help them see if this is the career path that they want to go. So as I say, there's usually three different groups of people. There's the 18-year-old that can't boil a can of corn. There's the 27-year-old that's got a family and needs to grow up and figure out what I need to do for life. And then I have the older ones that just want to give back to the community. So it's a blend that we have. And part of their process is we try to engage them in public speaking. They have to do programs and presentations throughout the thing. And this is the very first one where they get to introduce themselves to you. So gentlemen, if you would please pull forward, come forward.
Hello, y'all. Yeah, I'm Ryan Summers. I'm from Keller, Texas, and I'm glad to be a part of the department, serving citizens in Hasslet.
Welcome.
I'm Jackson Lee. I'm from Justin. I just recently graduated from Northwest High School and I'm excited to be here.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Ben Rutter. I live in Northland Estates and I'm trying to be a volunteer fireman.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Miguel Ruiz. Born and raised in Fort Worth and I'm glad to be here.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ian Turk. I live here in Hasslet and I'm looking forward to being a volunteer firefighter here.
Excellent. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Summers. I live in Cinder Ranch, which might be Hasslet, might be Fort Worth, but I'm very excited to be a part of this program.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Fozzy Jerdy II. I live in Hurst and I'm taking the first steps to change my life and my career. Thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Garrett Gibson. I'm 18 and currently enrolled in Eaton High School, part of the EMT program. This is my second year going through this and I'm very appreciative for it.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Carson Chini. I'm from Hasslet. Thank you.
Yes, Hasslet. Welcome.
My name is River Dominguez. I'm 16 years old and I live in North Star.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Council. My name's Dakota Reed. I'm from Eagle Mountain and I'm grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Myers from Hasslet, 17 years old, junior at Eaton High School. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Welcome. Counsel and ladies and gentlemen, would you stand and just give these gentlemen a round of applause? On behalf of the city council and the city of Hasslet, I want to thank each and every one of you for your volunteerism. And it, the price you have to pay just to get to this point is, it's a testament to your conviction to this. Thank you again. Chief, thank you.
I just wanted, just for full clarity, so Chief Thetford is the highest ranking chief on the volunteer side and he, they all answer to him. And we have the paid side and we have the volunteer side. And that's where Chief Thetford is essentially responsible for all these little baby ducks.
I know that Chief Thetford, he's been running this program for many years and it's been built up to Hasslet Fire Department has a, I'll say, a regional reputation of being a great training program. But again, thank you. Thank you all. Have a good evening. With that, let's go to item four, assist participation and comments. Do we have anyone in the audience that'd like to address the council? Do we have anybody online?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Let's move to item five, items of community interest. The Hasslet general election be held May 3rd, 2025, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for electing office of mayor, council member place two and council member place four. All terms are for two years. Filing period has passed, which was February the 14th. Tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, there will be a ballot order drawing at the community center. Like to make, we, there was a scribbler error on the original posting with regard to early voting. The early voting is from May 3rd. For the May 3rd general election will be from Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, to Tuesday, April 29th. It was originally published as the 27th, but that's been corrected. As the election approaches, specific polling places will be published in accordance with state law. Item 5B is the annual Easter egg hunt. That's Saturday, April the 12th, 2025, 4:00 PM at the community park. We go to item six, administrative reports. Counsel, do you have any questions on the administrative reports? There are none. Thank you. Item seven, updates on activities and projects, community park projects. The, James, you could better give us updates. I know you got some air conditioning work going out there.
Uh, yes. So at Nancefield, Ancooney Park and Gamble Park, those bathroom facilities are having mini split HVAC systems put in that mainly keep us from having frozen pipes. That installation was about 90% completed today and they'll do a startup this week. So we'll have those to remain open from now on.
Very good. The Keller Hasslet Road Extension, that project is moving on very well. Mr. Anderson, you got anything you want to say to that? I know they started laying base out there. Very good. The, and as tentatively we have planned is a, the first week of April is the ribbon cutting for the opening of that roadway. They'll just, we'll put out more information as that date and time firms up. Item eight, consent agenda. We have approval of the February 3rd, 2025 regular city council meeting minutes.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to prove the consent agenda is written.
Motion is made to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I have a second.
There is a second. All in favor? Unanimous? Item nine, public hearing to ordinances, resolution, action items. Item 9A, discuss, consider an act regarding the approval of the final plat for lots 4A, 4B, and 9R, 10 and 12, Lutera Village. Mr. Anderson?
Mayor, I had one on the turn lane. Is it south of the green area? Do we know where that is that's going in?
Turn lane will be a, be a left-hand turn lane into the exit entrance there at the settlement, yes.
So on, on all the entrances here, there's none of the little raised divider curbs, is there? Like in front of the Sonic entrance? Yeah, thank you.
The pork chops were put in as a, as a measure with the original development and little turn to control right in, right out, and right out.
Okay.
All right then, let's go to part two, discuss, consider an act.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat for lots 4A, 4B, 9R, 10, and 12 for Lutera Village.
Motion is made to approve the final plat for lots 4A, 4B, 9R, 10, and 12, Lutera Village. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I'll second.
There is a second. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, council. Item 9B, discuss, consider an act regarding the community facilities agreement between the city of Hasslet and QT South LLC for the Quick Trip number 1861 addition, lots 1 and 2.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the community facilities agreement covering the public improvements shown here on your, on your screen to include a dedicated, included left turn lane from Hasslet Parkway heading east onto the property, a right-hand deed settling into the property, and then half of the ultimate roadway improvements for Harmon Road heading north out of the intersection. This project is also set to install the traffic signal that are on the road and Hasslet Parkway. It's about $750,000 investment in the intersection. So they're doing quite a bit of work here, been a great partner, great, great folks to work with. This is the last, the last item needed for approval prior to them moving forward with their onsite construction. We are in the process of finalizing some of the public improvements shown here, coordinating those with another project that's kind of popular funds. We just take out their final plans next week and they'll be set to go to construction. The agreement outlines the required terms for construction of those improvements, how the transfer of the city's corporate bonds insurance, et cetera. The next slide, James, may show that's kind of the traffic signal layout. And we were able to secure the app right away with the ultimate signals in place for three of the four legs. We will have a leg that needs to get moved at some point of the future to morph down Harmon Road. Quite a bit done here in the project. And again, I just want to say quick for any other great partner, good folks to work with on this. Have any other questions? Really, other than road improvements and the traffic signal, water and civil facilities were already in the ground for this project. That's what the security covers.
Mayor Halsey, I have one question and it goes in regards to that, this traffic signal. Before, when we put the four stop signs up there and stuff, we had, we put them up because you had a hard time seeing on the left-hand side because of the electric, electric box. Is that box being moved or?
That's being addressed with our Hasslet Parkway engineering firm, which is Kimberly Horn. And they are working with Tri County and that's been a two-year topic. And, because I brought that up two years ago. But nonetheless, that is being worked on. Tri County has looked at it. They are determining where they will put that and what that design will be and if any additional right-of-way is needed for that, to move that. So yes, that's been a site distant or sighting issue. Kimberly Horn was put on notice that that will be, and going back two years, that any other placement of any transformers sighting will be taken into account for. But you're right, that's, but it's being addressed. And that, that is part of the Hasslet Parkway project. All right, let's go to part two on this, discuss, consider an act, council.
Mayor Halsey, I'd like to make a motion
Yes.
To approve, to approve the community facilities agreement, CFA, between the city of Hasslet and QT South LLC for the Quick Trip number 1861 addition, lots 1 and 2.
Motion is made to approve the community facilities agreement between the city of Hasslet and QT South LLC for the Quick Trip number 1861 addition, lots 1 and 2. Is there a second?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second. All in favor? Thank you. Item 9C, discuss, consider an act regarding payment to the city of Fort Worth for .306 acres of right-of-way for certain intersection, intersecting improvements at Harmon Road and Hasslet Parkway for the Quick Trip number 1861 addition. Mr. Anderson?
I'd like to arrange the agenda this evening so we got a logical flow for these acres. Last item that you have here for my presentation this evening is the getting authorization of pay for the right-of-way shown on the exhibit there in yellow, that north and south portions of the intersection. This will allow us to get these signals placed as needed and allow for work to commence at the intersection. These tracks are bought by Fort Worth for environmental mitigation, construction of the airport. They require special appraisal approvals, et cetera. Been working for about nine months to get all that packed up with your approval. Then you will be able to execute the transfer of this right-of-way to the city and go to the corporate city council in two weeks. They basically have no objection for the project and the need. The mayor's been working with the manager's office on this for a while. So I'll be ready to go. So if there's any questions, I'll be able to answer those.
James, will you pull up the PDF? It should show the amount.
Mayor Halsey, I did look up the amount and also on this too.
Financial impact.
It's the $27,191. I guess my question, do we, is it coming out of a budget line or is it coming out of the contingency?
That's what the financial impact statement is, is coming out of contingency. We have a balance of $727,506.50. So we have plenty of funds.
Thank you. Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment to the city of Fort Worth for not, to not exceed $27,191 for .306 acres of right-of-way for cer- certain intersecting improvements at Harmon Road and Hasslet Parkway for the Quick Trip number 1861 addition.
Motion is made to approve payment to the city of Fort Worth for .306 acres of right-of-way for certain intersecting improvements at Harmon Road and Hasslet Parkway for Quick Trip number 1861 and not to exceed $27,191. Is there a second?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second. All right. All in favor?
We have a discussion.
Did you have a dis-
I had a quick question. You had mentioned that there's another piece that we might need later or have to move. Mr. Anderson, is that something we might have to come back with and purchase more right-of-way?
No, that was a movement of a light, a signal light.
So we already own that area to move it.
Let's go to the exhibit. Show that real quick. It's actually, uh, so you see in red, the red is mast arm that it's going to extend over the road as you go. And then you'll see it needs to shift over into that piece of mine. That'll just be, that'll be part of the project costs, those lanes when that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Call for the vote. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, council. All right, 10, executive session. We have no need for executive session unless council has something. All right, let's go to item 12, future agenda items. We got the Quick Trip Pro Rata reimbursement agreement. That'll be coming to you, I believe, next meeting. And designation of the full-time fire department ordinance that could be next meeting or meeting after. Other than that?
Yes, Mayor, I noticed the Parks Board had a special meeting earlier this week to discuss the memorial garden. And it looks like they've come to conclusion on that. So I'd like to get that on the next council agenda so we can review and make decisions, whatever's needed, to get that moving if we can. I think our goal is to try to get it all in place by this Memorial Day if possible.
Understood. There are some administrative items to address on that project. And I do know that the Park Board Chairman emailed the council this afternoon, or this morning, rather, with regard to that, requesting that. One of the difficulties that we have, there's no plan. What's this going to look like? I mean, there's a picture of someone's driveway and there's a picture of something that was done in some other city somewhere. But the city of Hasslet has no design of what this memorial garden's going to look like. And also the construction, I've had Public Works review it, and there are some construction-related definitions that are lacking that will make all the difference in how this turns out. So the, I've sent it to Public Works, so they will respond here shortly. But we have to have a plan.
Is this the memorial garden that's, that's currently in the, in the park?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're just wanting to add some more flowers?
No.
No, it's a lot.
No, this is-
I haven't read it yet because I was at practice today.
This is a, it will be completely
Moving the-
demolished and rebuilt.
Oh, but not, okay, but keeping it in the same location?
Same location.
Okay.
But what, we have no idea what it's going to look like.
So what did they use to say, quote, I know it's not open for discussion here, but somewhere along the line, there's communication between Public Works and Park Board and there was-
No, there wasn't.
And what did we get quoted? What did they get quoted?
Well, that's something that the Park Board thought that they would try to self-execute, which that's, they're an advisory board. They don't execute this type stuff.
No, the way it should work, the Park Board should give them information about what's needed and then they pick and choose what's needed. That should have been the process.
So it's premature right now.
Okay, so-
It is premature.
Okay.
But we're taking active role in it.
Okay. If staff could just update us within the next week, what it looks like, a target plan, and what the next steps are, that would be appreciated.
All right. We'll give you a target plan and what the next steps are.
Thank you very much.
And, very good. Any, anything with regard to, if we would make note of that? Ms. White?
And then I had a future agenda item for the March 3rd meeting to discuss, consider an act to accept the TextDOT design for the proposed bridge constructed at 156 in Avondale Hasslet. So I think I did put that in email though.
You did send that as an email.
Perfect. Thank you.
Glad you brought that up. TextDOT has not submitted a plan for Hasslet City Council to consider. The, that is something that every week we have a construction or meeting on Hasslet Parkway. And for more than a year, that's been something I've been urging TextDOT is to provide the city of Hasslet a plan so the city council can approve it. Right now, the only approved plan is the original design that's all at grade.
Yeah, so that's what I'd like to put on the, that's what I'm talking about, is to put that plan on the agenda.
There is no plan.
For the March 3rd. You just said there was a plan for at grade, not, not the actual bridge.
It's the one that was already approved years ago.
Okay, so was ever the plan that, that we discussed, I have to look back at my minutes, about- about, I don't remember which, I don't remember the meeting that we met and talked about it. That's the plan?
Now, there's been discussion about a bridge.
Right, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the bridge, yes.
But there is no plan submitted for.
So Tech Dot has no projected plan or idea or anything at this time?
They have purely a concept.
Okay, so then the concept, please, can.
So that is nothing for the City Council to approve. And I have presented, I believe it was back in June or July, showed, you know, the concerns that the city has with regard to collision zones.
Yeah, that's what I was on the agenda.
I will review that. It won't be, it, you're not at the point.
So take off the act, just consider, like discuss, just discussion then?
It will be, I'll present it and whatever discussion we'd like to have, that would be fine.
All right, perfect, thank you.
All right, so that'll be a discussion item as well as we'll give you an update by email on the process for the Memorial Garden. Very good. Anything else?
Okay, yeah, it was the June 3rd meeting. Okay, I was just making sure I found it. Okay.
Good.
I'll review that, too.
The, let's go to item thirteen, adjourned. May I have a motion?
Mayor Halsey, I'll move to adjourn.
Motion is made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
There is a second. What did you have to think about? You want to stay a little longer?
Who's going to flip the card first?
All in favor? It's approved. Motion or meeting adjourned at 7:30 p.m. Thank you. Y'all stay warm. Other than being cold, there is no expectation of any hazardous weather.